I think you have COVID coming in the west. I really pray that it continues to play. Like all the brothers and sisters in the south for the thing, he has his way, his country and state. Take time and remedy on the low and the leaders and guys. I would thank you, but great father, you couldn't be president again in our heart. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us, real life, and now that you could never accomplish anything. Father, I pray concern you for this every year here and the family as well. Just give us some of your voice, you know, our brother and our brother and sister. Thank you, Father, for this and the people that have had a problem. I ask you for deliverance, not a debt, but deliverance, other due, other due, yes, other due. I pray for our president, our governor, all of that confusion that you just need, Father, looking at me. And for our school, by the way, like there are schools, sisters, foreboding, new spaces, still been working on, and I'm with. I pray for the fire department, that's looking at me. I pray for years ago, I pray for you, I just pray for people who were up on that looking at me. Father, I present standing up here, would you mind, could y'all come and pray for me?
Amen. First prayer. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Here.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain.
Here.
Mr. Michael Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Linehan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy O'Clan.
Here.
President Louis Kemp.
Here. The Lord is holy, the Lord is holy.
So moved.
You are listening, you are, they're listening, they're saying, yes, they're saying, please, for your honor. You have a hundred things.
Ah.
You have fault, oh, for sure. I'm a woman, Mr. Mike Morris, that is just lighting project, all government did. He's a good guy. Thank you, Mary, thank you.
Check, check. Well, first of all, thank you, guys, I've been speaking here a couple of times. Uh, my company is M M Energy Solutions. We have been doing these public service commission grant programs for the past few years. A product accumulated somewhere around, in fact, getting close to 20 million, I'll tell you, projects done throughout the state of Louisiana. Just to give you a summary of the program, this was passed, I feel like six years ago, through the legislature, where the public service, uh, worked with the energy companies, you talked, they get, uh, they get, uh, energy, food code, sweat code, where they were taking small millage from their residents in the area, putting into a fund to upgrade any public entity, uh, with lower than that energy cost. And these programs can be applied to lighting program and pretty much HVAC. Most of the projects have been, uh, lighting, just because it's kind of a little hanging fruit, uh, and doesn't, uh, run into some of the high cost of, uh, some children and so forth. But, um, I, I came through here a couple of years ago and actually audited all of the facilities that have on issue. And I think David said maybe one or two, and then maybe upgraded to LED. So the first thing I say is you have to be an energy G sweat code, I mean, a food code, food code, or, uh, sweat code. Do food code and sweat code count for us to, for you to be eligible for these funds? In 2026, the, the co-ops like Sika and, uh, I don't know what you have up here, might be in the, in the. Demco. Demco. Yeah, Demco, uh, they're supposed to get involved in the program as well. So we'll have more funds available through that program as well. Uh, not many people know about it, and not many contractors are, are, uh, kind of equipped to do the type of work that I do. Uh, I cover the whole state of Louisiana. Uh, most of the electrical companies that get involved with these are maybe global, major area. For them to go through the process, we helped you, pretty much provide you the whole application process. We hold your hand, we do it, we had everything in place a couple of years ago, and we were ready to submit right at the deadline. Because all, a year ago, we had, two years ago, well, actually, last year too, all the applications had to be in by January 31st. So it was right towards the end of the month by the time I got everything approved through here, or just, uh, audited through here. And it was just a little bit too much paperwork for the person at that time, or I don't have your name either, but, uh, the gentleman. But we didn't have time to give a hand, so we kind of dropped it. And then we did, we didn't recall or come back for last year to submit you guys again for whatever reason. We had a lot of work going through the whole state. But I brought it back up to, um, searched out David and, uh, said, hey, we, uh, well, District Two is not releasing a whole lot of their funds. They, their executive secretary was just kind of slow walking this program. They built up a lot of revenue the past couple of years. To my knowledge, right now, they have about $7 million of these funds set aside. It's really sitting in an escrow fund, if you want to call it, uh, at the energy companies. Here, I think you guys are energy G mostly, depending.
Yeah.
Okay. So energy, uh, with the whole of those funds, and it's up to the commission to check off which projects they want to do. Then I come in and I fund the whole project, I do all of the capital investment, and, uh, provide the labor, dumpster, whatever else we use of this. And at the end of the project, we do a walkthrough with the, uh, commissioner representative and with the facility director to David. Someone on your end that approves that we did the job up to the expectations of what you guys wanted. And then, uh, I can, and then we do a closing report, send it to the Public Service Commission State Office, they send it over to energy G, energy G pays me. So it's a lot of 68 process for the time we start and we finish. Usually finish a project in usually a week, depending on the size of the building. But, um, it's, it's just a little slower, won't get that money, money through and get to the paperwork with the commissioners. But you guys have had no investment in this program. It's not a, uh, project funded by, uh, and follow the state rules of getting for public health entities like yourself because of the way they're structured, the same. So if I came in and I did the application, you don't have to go out and get two more bids. I'm not looking for the worship builder, they're looking for what goes out and wrap this application, does the paperwork, this process in it. It's going to a spreadsheet that I think, whenever the commissioner is ready to check off and they have the funds available, and you get checked, and we make the ring with you guys to come in here and, uh, and actually do the, do the lighting project. District Two has gone to the pri, the numbers that you see in the first column are both amount, they're probably going to double because they now not doing any retrofitting, they're going to do total new fixtures, they don't want to do a retro anymore. Retros really work in certain places, but we, we have what we call kind of a hybrid program. We put a retro, if the fixture is good, this was not, I think these are LEDs. Uh, if they were not LEDs with that fixture, I'd recommend replacing, we would just choose and not replace the old fixture because it's kind of wasting the taxpayer money. But they decided they want everything to be new fixtures, so it's not going to affect you guys whatsoever. Because if these numbers go from about 88,000, it turns out to be 160,000, uh, you know, and they decide to approve. Now they do, and they can do it individually, we submit them that way. But if they bond them and give you four or five projects, we can either run those together on the same, um, invoice, or we'll split them up into higher level projects that they approve. Um, if they don't get approved, or the ones that would not get approved, they just roll over to the next year. So that way, you're still on the board. And from, from what I remember, this was the only buildings that you guys had that were available for, for the program. The, uh, payback time is going to be a little different, but again, it's, I don't want to say it's not your money, so ratepayers in this area is money, but there's no capital investment on your part. So the payback, they're just trying to hope that everything comes down to 10 years with the new fixture program. Uh, which again, wouldn't affect you guys. The internal investment, it's, like I said, it's going to increase that somewhat. Um, they're, uh, we're looking at, probably the annual burn rate, they're, uh, that in that column, that's, that's just based on, uh, 12 cents or 10 cents at that time, uh, per kilowatt hour. And, um, we look at how many hours your buildings are actually open and burning utilities. Then we estimate a kilowatt, you know, prior to, to the project, and then what we reduce it to, uh, after we change everything out. The bottom line, the number is really important for you guys, is how much we reduce your kilowatt hours, and then what is your savings going to be? So if you're assuming that it'll just pick, that $60,000, you just turn utilities, you probably cut that down, you know, about 50%. So go from 50 to 25, definitely giving you a bottom reduction in the cost of operation. But again, there's no investment on you, so you have no capital to, to recoup. Uh, and it, I have a negative idea, turn the program down. It's one of those, it's kind of like, because you're saying this is free. And it's really not free because it's the ratepayers in the area that put this money aside to, but it has been passed through state legislature. It's just part of that utility bill that probably most ratepayers don't really, you know, they're paying for, but it's, it's not a high, it's spending as long as dollars, I'm not saying. But, um, that's the, um, that's the program, if you have any questions about that, uh, if you have an answer. The, uh, the other thing is just if you do approve it, then I need to give it to David because we want to come back and re-audit these again and, uh, bring one of my people out here. Again, of course, you guys will just go through each building, make sure the, the fixtures that we add on the old proposals are correct. But instead of, you know, changing it to a 32 watt LED tube, we can be changing it to a flat panel, or, you know, whatever fixture would be the best replacement. Go to fixture, it's, it's in the system.
And it's free, it's free, I know, it's free. Do I have a question after my prayer, I have a question, what, what kind of challenge are you looking?
Well, once we put, do, go back and do the application, I'll probably have someone available within the next, we've got, I think we've got about six more. Probably, we've already done 2.5 million projects this year, and I'm getting towards the end of the ones that have already been approved. In this district, the only gave us two projects, they're kind of, they've never done any business with my company, so they wanted, it's kind of a test, to see how good we are. That, I'm not, I'm probably passing out, I've done more projects in state than any electrical contractor. Um, but once I get the applications in, the funds are there. My question would be, how many of you opposed to Craig Green, the district Public Service Commissioner? If Craig right now is holding the, the applications, he's the one that gets the checks off. He's not running for real election, so I kind of look at, if you want to go over to bank, you know, spend the $7 million, you gotta spend a good portion of it uh, because that money just sitting anyway, you know, why leave it for the next commission to come in? Uh, so if we put all of your buildings in there, it'd be a matter, somebody's put a little, can't come from me because then this little kid pushing a money in. Or if anybody can give them a call and say, look, I know you're going out, you've got funds available, we'd really like to get our applications approved before you go to the office. And I think that, that might be what I would suggest.
I was, I was trying, I gave him a gift, though.
November's going to be election, we'll have until, uh, January 1st, you know, we're going to get approved.
I think, what Mr. Kemp wants to know is, of all these buildings, if they're approved or not, do we want a court, you know?
Yeah, for.
What's the type of project? I mean, if you're building off their property, you got to shoot off.
Nine thousand dollar project, uh, looking at projects, you probably, we probably get that done in two days. We, we, we work 12 hour shifts.
But the venue period of time it would take for us to get that approved?
How long was that?
You said it was a relevant guarantee?
Well, we, we would, we'd probably in the next two weeks can get all the applications. Now, I might be able to get them in sooner, because I got to have people on my team that's doing audits to come in and re-audit everything. Right now, of course, those individuals are on projects, installing right now. Uh, so I need to pull them, come over here, double check everything, resubmit, well, resubmit proposals, you have to put an application in. So I'll give you a proposal, you need to verify that those buildings are utilities by introducing, you give me a copy of that bill for that building to just verify this introduction, all files. And, uh, we put the application together with you, we're sure you haven't designed a couple of them to ask for the money. It's all, it's pretty much a mechanized whole process, if you use that name, but, uh.
Well, I would talk to David, Doc. Yeah, but I mean, I, I think if I can pay, we're going to get it approved, that, that, that is going to be okay. As Mike said, this program was presented up a few years ago, I, I had the same sense, there's no way this is going to cost us money. Get it out, get it out. So just, just one true program to actually work the way it says it's going to work. And there's it, David wants it done, uh, there's another, I think, brush your vote. Yeah, we just did, yeah, we, we just, I mean, I brush your vote, I know. Uh, I mean, it's, it's a program that works.
Yeah, if you can give me a list of priority from one all the way down, so however many buildings we have left. And then what we'll do is settle an application, then, then if you want to make that follow-up call with them, because I can't, I don't, I mean, I need to do the selection. I don't have any to do with which ones they're going to approve or not approve. But if you guys call them and say, look, we're like, we'd like to get all of our buildings approved. And, and really, the run of money we have here, we've got plenty of money to do all the projects, you know, I'm just being honest with you, I'd love to have them all. They, they've got a big pool of money right now, it's a matter of how much. And they, the good thing about it is they want to spread it around to each parish because of this political thing. Uh, and you have the schools in this area, I don't know if it was a utility issue or it was already done, but we don't have any, East Louisiana schools.
The schools are really good.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so any other things from municipal building, so I came in and did the parish, and that's all I have on the books right now for you guys. Um, but, um, any other buildings that apply, and pluses to the parish, I'd be happy to continue to put them in. But to get these done, if they have the funds there, it's just a matter of, like I say, always sweep you off, and just keep pounding them.
And this is money that comes from money that we're asking, paying energy and Demco, is it some of that mysterious money that we save?
Your, your ratepayers have put this money, they think they pulled it from, because it's like, it's already included in the bills from past years. And it's sitting there right now, and the thing about it that everyone ought to be concerned about is that, that money's there already, it's like, spend it. We, we, we contribute it out now, so give us our share, and, uh, and, uh, I'll open up a plate here, let them come in and take care of these. You know, once, once I get them approved, I can tell you, I'm going to be done in the next six weeks with every project that I have on the board. Uh, get ready, it's far from my, at the Southern University, uh, but there's only two projects out of District Two. We have Zachary, um, early on in the Senate, and we have the West Louisiana Old Courthouse that's been approved. I've got four projects in the hopper, but again, looking at E3, San Diego's had no funds at all, uh, with this program allocated to you guys. So I think you have a, a little chat.
I would give them Mike tomorrow, which I'm, but it's.
Okay, Eddie Kell, uh, since y'all taken the, the retro aspect out of the, the picture. Uh, LED fixtures, when they're done, you toss them and you replace them. So what kind of warranty, or what's the lifespan of the fixtures that you put in, and what kind of warranty did they have on it? And y'all need to understand that, once they're done, you're going to pay for the new fixture.
Yeah, because, uh, usually almost all of the fixtures, uh, 50,000 hours as far as for, uh, warranty. And that's usually somewhere in the ballpark of five to 10 years, it depends on how many, how many people lights on. Uh, the, uh, that warranty is a fixture warranty, we have a one-year label warranty. And usually, within the first 30 days, if I got a faulty fixture, it happens in the first 30 days, it's usually not. The diodes that get in there is the driver, is back, and then we replace it. And then you're, again, you have the same type of warranty, you should have 50,000 hours on that fixture. Uh, new fixtures usually are run about three times a mile, and so looking at the cost of installing a new fixture versus a retrofit. The, the thing is that time it takes to pull the new fixture out, and the disporting of that, it takes several dumpsters to move that right down. So we always budget that in there. And yet, to be honest with you, like, if you have a, uh, two-bone LED, a twofter, and, uh, that room's about, uh, $12 a tube, so it's, it's 24 bucks, 12 bucks at the most. And a flat panel, a two-by-four flat panel's about $80. It's a lot more expensive, but everybody likes the new idea, now that everything's new and it's not putting band-aids on it, which is, sometimes drags a little man, the fixture really needs to be replaced. And they don't, they don't replace it, so they give you lenses, but when you do bulbs, it looks good, and it puts out more light, but the, still got rusting, still looks, you know, a little bit, uh, maybe that one's a little bit of a fixture price. Again, that doesn't, it just eats up the money a little bit quicker, uh, than what they have, you know, when we do retros. Give you an idea, in, in District Four, I did 15 projects for about a million and a half, and Michael Pedder, he only does new, and he did five projects for the same amount. So it was spread out a lot more, 15 projects got done, uh, but five projects got new fixtures, and the other had, had the hybrids, whereas some new fixtures and some retro fixtures, but just.
What's the title of your question?
I have a question, uh, you mentioned you would be the contractor of choice. In the past, the jury's gotten into some trouble at the town hall audit for just using the first contractor that came along. How do we remedy that, or how do you go about?
Well, you're not, I believe that you're not, you don't have to use me, to be honest with you, you don't have to, uh, if you want to search someone out. I've got four years experiencing this, I'm probably the oldest, uh, because we've had some, for sure, North, Foster Campbell wants three prices on every project that we do. I've never lost a project, my prices always low. I've got a little different model, my whole model's built around this program, uh, in the past, uh, I don't, I don't have electric companies dealing with Joe Bow, no local type business that typical electrical companies have. I focus my whole energy for my company now, just on this program, because there's, there's enough money for me to make, and it doesn't require the big process. So the margins are a little bit, you have to fight for, you know, 2% margin. Uh, and, um, when you start looking at, you know, being able to handle this parish and all the way up into Concordia, go to, you know, uh, East Carroll, West Carroll, Ridge, and most of the companies that have to just do that little local vendor there. And then you have to, you have to be able to fund that project 100% until it's completed.
Mike, I don't want me to cut you off, but Mr. DeQuilla, it's, it's no parish wanting to be involved in this, and this is no out-of-pocket expense whatsoever. We're not fronting the money, we're not waiting to recoup the money. They basically assume all risk, all responsibility, so we don't have any dog in this fight, right?
Am I right? It sounds like, if you know, I haven't seen the contract, I'm just going to listen to what he said.
Yeah, you really don't even have a, you don't even have a contractor's contracted me. Basically, your, your, your application has me as the contractor, uh, if you have Joe Bow as a contractor, whoever is can, can do the project. Uh, the one thing I say, if I got a list of every project that I've done in the last four years, I can give you a name of all, you know, how many projects it is with that person contacting me. I never had one complaint, I never had one problem, um, with, with all the way we do our business.
You have a question, you have a new, um, what's the title of your?
I'm making a motion to move forward.
I'll, I'll, um, um, second. You go follow that camera, right?
Yes, sir, I'll be with you, David, I'll call tomorrow, and, uh, I'll get, I'll get on it as quick as I can, and get those, get those put in.
And David, what's your good line?
Appreciate you guys for this.
You want to say something? All the thanks, in the home, working here. I got the minutes, I'm glad I picked this, 2024, I'm picking this.
I'll read that one, I'll make the motion. I'll read that one and I'll make the motion.
A document that's on July twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-four, whether it's about this.
I'll read them and I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion. I'll proceed.
The state, for the Lord, not a favor.
Aye.
In the home. If somebody's been a special gathering in March or if there's a review of two, instead of powers by the time of offer. First of all, if understanding, six months, four charges, oh, seventy, we have all the hands, nine of these seven. Not only do you get home, but oh, seventy, okay? If you can understand. Thank you, sir. Um, I'm doing my.
Josh, so we've got subdivision that will go away with setup and ordinance. That will shut everything down. Now, it'll shut everything, it'll leave away with, um, I mean, there won't be any additional property the way ordinance comes up. You know, just, I mean, just to be clear. Our last discussion we had here, I was opposed to, personally, nothing to do with my commission, nothing to do with my group right now. At this point, I support it.
So we all working on the way now?
So this, this would be a little.
How about six months? There shouldn't be a temporary, for, it needs to be more than six months? So all of this can get done, fine.
I think, I think six months is the time, but y'all have the option to extend or actually take it out. Y'all can take it out for months.
I'm gonna do six months. At the most, you might say extend it, and then Josh has said, if you finish it four months, you can take it out. You don't, you don't have to have it. If you say six months and you get it done in four months, you don't have to wait two more months. Just come back to the meeting and say, hey, guys, artists are flush, we ready to roll, that's good. And you just drop it.
Because of yours, you got a date for the ten day, I mean, six months start.
I would say six months to start tonight, y'all hold on. Mr. Quillen, am I right? Or, or is it, or does it have to lay over ten days? Does it have to lay ten days or you, we good? It's, it's not like an artist. Artists gotta lay thirty days, right? So, I mean, tonight, you start tonight and you spend just probably six months.
She work for a paper.
Josh, I did want to ask one thing. Uh, we spoke about families, including them in the, uh, in the guidelines we were trying to change or just, should we, I guess I should put you on the spot like that. My thought was to make it a family.
For family, for a family division.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Make it difficult to do that. Uh, that is one of our open situations now. That's, a lot can be done under that.
Okay, so that's fine, that's enough.
It's, the way we're set up is kind of a all or nothing.
It's, it's difficult, that's the answer I need, you know, it would be hard to break that out.
But if y'all wanna get into the weaving of the word and oven, that's up to y'all, but I think it's only the smallest of it.
Okay, that's fine. And I think Mr. Williams had something I had to go on about.
Uh, Jeff Williams, CBS. I just kinda want some clarification on the actual mortuary with the law down. I want to ask the fourth is, uh, is this going forward as far as like the petitions, like for instance, okay? I've gotta be able to prove that they were done prior to this day. That's why, you see what I'm saying?
Okay. Anything that's been approved, any subdivision that's been approved, preliminary is three, so you're three. They can still back. The one that's the hidden point, the other one around sixty-four, he got, they've all, all been approved. Preliminary, yeah, quite good. And this is the only subdivision, this has nothing to do with commercial. Make sure you write that, Mr. Williams.
But the way our ordinance is, subdivision is very, I mean, I cut out any kind of division property in terms of subdivision. That's why I'm trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, because obviously something has to go.
There's gonna be a lot of conversation about it.
Was it six months?
Hold on, hold on. Jeff, I still need to be clear. So y'all saying no property can be subdivided? You got ten acres that came about in two pieces? I still want to clear on what dollar. That, that, that's still, I understand what you're saying.
I would say, Mr. DeQuille, you can't subdivide property, right?
Well, y'all just telling me today about this, giving you a opinion on something I really didn't even look at. But, you know, y'all wanted to do a mortuary on subdivisions. In my mind, when you say subdivisions, it's dividing any property at all. Maybe wiser to say, hey, we wanna do a mortuary on any subdivisions of more than four lots or something like that. You see what I'm going?
Well, that's why I'm asking, because the ordinance says a subdivision can divide any piece of property in two pieces, period. That's the only thing your subdivision ordinance says. And I know y'all monkeyed around with family petitions and you had these things come up all the time where people need to put a mobile home on their piece of property. Well, if we do that, y'all, if y'all even gonna disallow that, whether it's the hardship case or someone needs to put their, whoever on their piece of property, because they already got a house and they got subdivision, well, that requires a subdivision, I mean, putting a mobile home on it, that requires a subdivision of that property. So, you know, be doing this for a living, I'm just, I'm trying to be clear of what y'all are doing. And what y'all's reasoning for is, you know, if you're just trying to stop the dog, and Mr. Amer, I said it doesn't touch commercials. So I'm just trying to understand the reasoning of what you're really trying to stop. Or, you know, I know you're trying to hold off and get the ordinances revamped. I get that. But what I hear, you come out shutting down a hundred percent of people trying to do anything with their land. Someone needs some money and I got five acres, I wanna cut it up into two pieces, whatever. Sound like you're even trying to stop that? On an existing road and everything, so I'm just trying to understand exactly clearly what you're doing, because the survey is the one that gets the job. Just gotta implement it from y'all's standpoint, but it's not the lawyer, it's not the engineer, it's not the contractor. But, you know, piece of property's gotta be created for anybody else to do anything with it, so.
I mean, it's been tested. So can, can you say, can you make like four lots, can you do that?
Look, I, I, I.
And I know, I, I know I put you on the spot.
I'm telling you, but you talked to me five minutes before the meeting, you said, hey, can you do this and you can you do this? And I'm like, hey, I don't know, I haven't even looked at it yet. You tell me a couple of weeks before we come to the meeting, show me the ordinances that you want to look at before we come to the meeting. You know, when y'all be like, you put me on the spot and say, hey, can we do this? I would say initially, thinking from sitting right here for the last ten minutes, I would say, hey, maybe you shouldn't divide, subdivide anything more than four lots. I mean, then you can say, hey, we do a mortuary for the purpose of, of slowing down the growth in the parish, so we can rearrange our separated ordinances, so we can get a hold of our group. Okay? Can't divide anything more than four lots per, per person, you know, I'm just trying to create something.
Oh, I'm saying that, but what I'm saying is, if you take this from a public safety standpoint, I, I would look at it, when I talk to all the jurors, I would look at this from a public safety standpoint, from a fire district standpoint, like. Now, we have thirteen fire districts, I think, somebody told me. And you got to get with, uh, the gas utility districts, you gotta get with water districts, you also gotta get, get with our, with our infrastructure, with sheriff. You got town clerk, you got town of Jackson, you got town slaughter. They all have police departments. I think Norwood has a police department.
Mr. President, I promise that you had the last meeting. And exactly what, uh, Mr. Quillen said, is what I said. Hold it, no more than four lots, you know, just make reasonable. Always gonna be something, nobody, everybody will never agree on this one percent. But I missed, I'm just gonna tell you, it's our, the future of East British Hannah Parish. Put the brakes on now. I, I guess we can wait till the weeks to.
I, I wonder if it's a really, Mr. Oliver, that something needs to happen.
Fix it to where, to where, um, it, it's probably, it doesn't take a lot to fix the building out. This way you're gonna get this part of that part. And I certainly wouldn't want to harm them. But in the future, in the coming, you'll realize what we're trying to do is the right thing.
I don't, I don't say, keep on telling.
Let's just.
I don't want people to think we don't want to come into the parish, okay?
No, we did.
Okay, we'll get that, we have to go fight growth.
Look, I mean, this, all y'all know, I mean, it's gonna be roughly a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty lots. It's gonna come up in my district. And there would be probably another three hundred in four more years. And what the property says, they moving there. You know, none of us is, he might, she might, live long enough. It's gonna be a town out there. I said twenty years ago, a little bit early. It's gonna be a town out there. It's gonna be big growth there. So do you want to have messed up growth or do you wanna have smart?
Most, most smart growth.
Okay, so that's all. I'm, I'm looking way into, first of all, that's what it is. And, and it's, and all it's gonna do is be better for you. You just gotta give it good time.
I understand what y'all are trying to do with the lawyer's stuff, but I'm just trying to bring you up to attention again, because a lot of things come up. People are getting ready to build a house, and I don't even like food, mortgage purposes only, that's another thing, Josh, today, and our ordinance has really done to address it. But if you put a mortuary on that, someone's in the middle of building a house, they don't have subdivision property. But now the bank wants to cut out three acres from five acres. So I'm just saying, even if you do a six month, whatever, I agree. Trust, y'all know for ten years we've been trying to get these licenses revamped. So I totally, not against it, I'm just saying, in the interim, even six months, it's gonna put hardships on some people, on the amount, on the small stuff they're trying to do, or mortgage survey, or name of a home, so anyhow, y'all just need to.
Any, any policy y'all put in place that's gonna be there, so.
If you wanted to make a motion tonight, maybe you can make a motion that you're gonna put a mortuary on the subdivision of more than four lots on by a particular person or corporation. That means somebody can subdivide it up to four lots for a six month period. For public safety purposes and to give the jury time to, to formulate a good, uh, new order.
That's what Mr. Quillen, I talked about. Yeah, but that's what Mr. Quillen I talked about this morning, but, y'all can make the recommendation to Mr. Quillen. Hold on tonight to what he told me earlier, and then y'all do it, right? Yeah, I mean, that's basically what he's telling now.
Because, uh, I guess if we do it tonight, we can always come back and tweak it a little bit if we have to. Once you investigate, it was like, okay, we can come back and just change it up without concrete, then tonight.
They think one's too large.
You ain't gonna do it for six months?
Yeah, six months is gonna come back.
Well, that's a judgment, you know, six until five minutes before we never been speaking. Like you just described, four, five minutes ago.
Four lots.
Four lots.
Yeah, there's a motion.
I say. And just to be clear, I think the motion's gonna be, there's gonna be a mortuary on the subdivision of more than four lots by any particular person or entity or things of that nature. On the basis that the jury needs to get together, work on the public safety aspect of a subdivision of, of a piece of property more than four lots by one particular person, that's gonna stop subdivisions, that's gonna stop somebody from buying a property for the four lots. So you're just gonna have the four lot minimum right now. Does that sound good?
For six months, y'all till now?
And if we can get it fixed before then, in four months, we'll come back.
Yeah, I got this.
All the favor.
Aye.
Start tonight.
Let's begin tonight.
Okay, let's move on. Discuss the action of the home manager, man, enjoy. You looking through it? What you feel good, you know, everything back on, on, on the table there?
Personnel committee. And if you look down at this slide, it says notify the jury of new hires and first regular petition after hire. And I do have some others that say why don't we bring that up saying, you know, recommend that before hire. They should be brought to the jury before. So I just insist on this.
I think we talked about that was gonna be part of this thing they got no new hires.
That's in the office?
Yeah.
In here. I'm the deputy doctor.
No, Frosty, 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 hiring, Frosty hires.
I just wanna clarify.
Yeah. So that's what we get to, cause you know, I think that's why I questioned before when we had the hiring, we said we hired someone who was qualified and did need, so we changing that to this?
Well, cause it was a new position. Cause it was deemed a new position. Think that's what.
I'm good with every y'all wanna do it.
He'll still be doing the same process.
I almost said what's wrong with the five, 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 five.
I'm good with how you do it.
I just want to point out the recommendation. Same type of job, person that's really good, that's the person you recommend here, back before you hear.
I, I'm good with your wife. I, I just need to know what y'all want me to do.
Yeah, cause I, me, me, I'm gonna tell you right now, I think this because we're elected official, we should be informed about the hiring situation. Because at the end of the day, I'm in, it's a hell of a looking for. Your, your day-to-day operations, you know, this Harris there, but this hiring thing comes about. That's just like when Mr. Craig went and did the vet for you, they came back with the recommendation to the jury and then hire, I think this process is still, still is that you like to have. That's just great, I mean, that's, you know, because you've been working with those folks every day. Like, yeah, when you come back and say, hey, jury, here's my recommendation, if you guys approve it, I'm gonna hire this person tomorrow.
I'm good with every y'all. I just need, listen, I just need to go one time and, don't change. I'm good.
John Ruschon. These positions, hiring is fine, if it's an established position. But according to state law, these are public jobs and they have to be advertised and it has to be fair and equal chance for anybody to get it. That's happened in the past that got hired and wasn't advertised and it's not an approved position. And that's where I think the jury needs to draw a line is, is first of all, you can say there's a vacancy, but it has to be an approved position. You don't create a new position and then hire somebody with never being advertised or approved.
So do we wanna say on there notify the jury of recommended new hires?
Before.
For approval?
Before.
Before?
Yeah, just notify new recommendation before hire. And then, you know, notify, you know, you know, this recommendation is great, but then he knows, I would like to even say, I'm gonna hire this Harris, that's my recommendation. So, hey, yes, I don't know how great, but she got work on this Harris, you know, that makes sense. Don't have anything much to say, cause I don't have to be in the part of it, I feel like as a board to.
Notify the jury of new hires recommendations.
Yeah.
New hire recommendations, new hire recommendations.
If you advertise, all positions, just, you know, that's, they got new position, you advertise.
So you just, let's just say notify there's a recommendation before hire, that represents, you know, so we have a meeting, recommend this recommendation before hire and then obviously say, okay, I, whatever, I'm gonna say that, but you still like to know that's, you know, must be, you take care of some of that.
So y'all is putting every y'all.
Notify the jury of new hire recommendation, of recommending new hires for board.
That's right.
Not just notify jurors, but it's gotta be approved by the whole.
Hire law process will be, they say they have a position, it could be after two weeks before it's my first job, they shouldn't, it needs to be filled. And the way it come to us, that's two weeks today.
Or you set up the interview process close enough before the meeting and that would probably be along that.
Yeah, that's right.
The custom matter is speaking up the word.
This one.
Uh, since we clear off a quick one now, and I do have another one to talk about.
Notify the jury of new recommended hires for board approval. Might be another one.
First of, and this is a new position, you gotta advertise for anyone.
Right.
Well, but this would be a new position, this would just be, somebody quits, bring somebody in, I mean, we're not addressing, I think, we make the address. New, it's not about new people, not new positions.
Yeah, but you, you still, you know, you, someone new, you still have.
Right.
See, he was referring that was a position created, a new position.
No, I'm, I'm saying if, if, if your mission quits today, and he wants to vet someone out to this, like, he should, even though he might say, okay, we don't, I'm just using my, you know, uh, person aid, okay, I did all the process, he comes back before this jury and say, hey, I'm gonna hire, hire, you know, advocacy, I went to it, and it's the best version we look at and say, okay, just in case someone happens, especially more higher, and you're like, oh, who's this person here, you know, you know, that's all I'm saying. It's still part of the day-to-day operations, so if it's him, you know, like, if a person come back to it and say, hey, this person worked out, you gotta be able to, but I still think you should be notified before the hire, just, you clear the title up. Same thing you guys did before the hiring, you came back to the jury and say, hey, this is your recommendation for Mr. Alman, this is all good?
Forget it for, for the talking.
That sounds great, and also, I'm speaking on this sound, I'd like to move down to, to clarify his, so he said he says attended all the jury, he said he may not be able to make everything, so I'm gonna put that just in case, you know, like, cause I'm, I was sitting here on the focus, missing beat suit.
Yeah.
Cause I see he said that attend all jury committee, so we don't wanna like.
I just more respect.
Yeah.
I think he said that had been the previous, John.
Well, that's the word, you say possible expectation, when you say that ten, all jury, it's like, you don't have an option, you got to be.
How, how about, how about just put, just put the police jury, I mean, hires man, feel hard, he's doesn't it?
That's, that's fine, that's.
And I would, yeah. Somebody, somebody in the administration, yeah, somebody in the administration, yes. Somebody in the administration will be media at the committee.
Okay, we should word that like that.
Yeah.
And lastly, I would be, be that I get the general requirements, and it says registered board of Paris, where, is that?
Part of the.
Okay, so that's why I put on the side, I say, live in Paris, we just, we just leave it as a registered board of Paris. But those are the three things I had to say, so we can, so those other two up, the last one is, is fine, registered board.
Accountable day-to-day operations. Yeah, I don't, probably sometime I got a book that I think, but that says it all, let's get this man out, do this, that's no question, let's just, let's get on, I, myself personally, I like the way he's moving forward, I find everyone he works with, that, mine constituents like him, and that's the only thing they don't like, is not to promote.
I'm looking at the motion that we accepted with this.
Amusement. Second.
Get the whole process, which I said, you know, we're already voting, first of all, everything in the bird, you have that fixed, you found your tractor fixed for the last three months, we haven't got fixed yet, because we wouldn't allow, we started, we started here, we get the tractor fixed, which can take four months to fix a truck, that's the fourth of the flip, it's going to break two fifty-one, that's fifty-one.
Mistakes, but we need it.
We need it. Tell them.
Don't get scared, Mr. John.
Mr. King, I'm glad you brought that up, the one thing that I would ask you all to do, when you didn't put him on John's script, and I, once the budget is approved, we shouldn't have, not have to come back to you.
Can you fix your plan?
I mean, that, that is most un, I, I, you, you can't give anybody nothing, you know, and, and then, y'all get phone call, bragging about why we don't cut grass, we can't cut grass.
There is no question, it shouldn't be wrong.
If this, if this is in the budget, y'all need to let us run the budget, and we can't go over the budget, can't not, but we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars equipment maintenance, and Mr. Hill wants a tractor fixed, I shouldn't have to come back, we should not, y'all approve the budget at the beginning of the year, that's a budget that this administration has to live within, I cannot spend more money than what the budget allows. So, but to have to come back for anything over a five hundred dollars, guys, that's okay, there, that's, that's no way to run government or business, not considering it's a business, it's a ten billion dollar a year business, I mean, and that's our private money, but y'all have got to give us a little leeway, if it's in a budget, don't keep making him come here. Let us, let us fix the stuff, please.
Okay, Mr. Hill.
Here, here, direct, um, because the first court I, I got was just for sectional work, you were just to fix the pinpoint of the property, it was eleven thousand, I didn't see any reason to send that court, because it was just the section, why would we pay eleven dollars to fix the justice? The joint of the boom, we can fix the whole boom for nineteen, okay, that was referred to an outside source, I called, I never really get no call back, but at the same time, the distributor, Alamo Distributives does not want to honor a piece of machinery that some of the copper fabricated on. So, we, we really need to try to fix, um, we got three tractors up and running, we got the two slow moles up and running, we got the site up and running, now we just wait to get this one approved, to get it running.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say motion.
That's a second.
No, I'm waiting, brother. Mr. Hill and I have talked today, at numerous times, we're gonna look at once possible, if it gets a little more color on, on the budget, our needs to help, both trash trucks are running, they said in the yard today for a little while, because he had everybody pulled off and doing something else, we're sharp here, so we're, we're gonna look at.
Told him, once told him, we're, we're. Two people, two big, they should have applications on hand right now.
But I may have to, but this was a credit, we wanna make sure that, that finances are all, all right where, where we are, so we don't hire two people to go tell, return, and take the people off. I said, y'all just be a little bit patient with it, we, he wants four, he wants, he wants four, so we, that, that burner, just see, but if y'all don't mind, hopefully possible we will have us a, hopefully within next couple of weeks, we will have a little bit better hold on where we are connection, I mean, the money's there, I, I permanently believe, you meet, Ms. Harris permanently believe, looking at everything, but we just wanna make sure, so that when we present something to you all, we don't have to start tracking.
Cause we finally, we finally got the other trash truck running, so therefore we have two trash trucks running, so we can keep open the parish really better, so we not getting as many complaints, but not need people to run those trucks.
So do we need to approve hiring four people?
No, we need to, actually, the two that we already talked about first, and, you know, I'm really sure we got delivered a couple of those two, but like you said, we can get back to the topic later on, but you need to go on with the process of hiring a little too many, you got, that's an already applied.
So may I ask you, before we hire, they got to come to you all, or to just, I, see, this, this is, this is, this is ahead of you, isn't it? I, I mean, y'all tell us to go hire two, so we go hire two.
They gotta come back here too, that's why we had that.
So, I, 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 you see that?
Have you started a day before, this process?
Not yet, yeah, I just spoke to Mr. David today, so you're like, we'll be back in two weeks, so typically you, you know, if somebody here, that we were telling, somebody need to go out here with two weeks notice, so if you wanna go and start with this.
Did you advertise?
Yeah, we definitely, but still we have to advertise.
You got time to do that, you got time to come back and inform your recommendation, cause you can't hire them anyways.
How do y'all want it advertised? Facebook, newspaper?
No, we got, we got, we got newspaper, maybe we advertise everything.
Mr. Ross, is anything else needs to be fixed?
Sure.
Anything else you need fixed?
Well, they came out and fixed the grader today.
Let me stand up on.
You want to stand up?
Cause their grader backed down. The same one Tommy? Play and see him work for DBW, the greater Tommy runs is a older grader, and it's got a, like, the diesel, when the grader sets up, it, it makes a, a jail in there, and Tommy go down the road and his grader shuts off, they got some chemicals you put in there, cause you know oil, that pretty soon oil come out to dirt, so by that, that diesel setting in there, and it's keep causing Tommy grader to shut down, but if we put that jail, put that, uh, diesel treatment in there, that'll keep that diesel, that, that grader running. See, that grader sat up for a whole month, so that's one man, we got three means running grader, you got a grader out, it's hurting us, so he left out this morning, and he called me, his grader broke back down.
So y'all could use something simpler, it's like the C form, you know?
It's not C form, but it's another, they got another form for that algae that builds up in that diesel tank, they got a different one. It's a diesel, right?
It works.
It works. So that's all we need, we just need approval, like, trying, I'm calling the boss, but I mean, he don't know, he can't, he, like, you're good, I mean, I.
So y'all going on the tractor?
It's an all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Not at all. But I, but I'm Mike, I'm making, I'm making a wish list.
Well, throw it in.
He needs a new truck. And we won't work on the new truck.
Take action on all systems, three, three, two, all systems, one, three, two.
Sorry.
Take action on the, 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 the.
I'll call him tomorrow. Yes, sir, I'm, no, I'll call tomorrow, tell him we're waiting on this program, it's free.
Josh.
I think.
Aye.
This is Ego's, uh, they, they scored, we scored them, they got four different scores, and they were the highest one, we sent it to, uh, Karen McColl, she's good with it, so I just made a motion to approve the.
Second.
Discuss the one bit, they had a, a, a.
HGA, sign time. Six. Just, that's really, yeah, you got, you, well, you got a fill out form, and you got a name, so I.
So move, second.
This, this, y'all, y'all have a state statute in the back of the top of the roof, uh, put it early, and he said, like, the nuisance, you can do it. Oh, okay, uh, you're not talking about the nuisance, are you, you, you're good with it, that we can go out and cut the grass and all, bring your property, and it, the assessor puts it on the tax bill, so you have to pay your taxes, so y'all will only be out with money for that year, and it, it depends on how you want to schedule them, or how, how many we have, I would like to start taxing maybe a couple of months, getting, uh, Mr. Hill, his people find out just how many they can tax them a month.
And we're gonna have to go through the nuisance process, where you're gonna have to notify them, give them.
Did we sign on thirty days or fourteen?
I can't remember.
Some of them, some of them are fourteen.
The statute says fairly what it is.
The statute, okay.
Cause you have a nuisance statute, and it says you have to give them a certain period of time to. It's fourteen, so it's fourteen days, so you give them a certified letter, or you give them official notice, if they don't correct it within fourteen days, then you can correct and put a lien, and we also can break the fourth, correct court.
Yeah, because our, 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 I saw that Cooper Land that you sent was fourteen days.
And what we did on Cooper Land, we actually just brought them, brought up landowners report, if they didn't, uh, take care of the nuisance, so.
Okay.
They either take care of it, or y'all can do it and assess a lien on that property.
Yeah, on Cooper Land, well, they have a house that's burnt right there.
Correct.
Yeah, how, how, where do, so, so you don't.
When your nuisance already actually covers that, the nuisance board, it's, uh, covered, has a provision in there for, well, kind of a, a light of, of, of structures, I can't really remember the exact order of it right.
Oh, that's fine, well, I, I'll be with you this week, you know, see which way to go there, Jeff, Jeff's been out, I mean, y'all did all the work on Cooper Land, I mean, I got, Jeff had showed me, the, 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 your lady brought it all to me too, I mean, it's, it's a long list of things that you all did, and just.
We have two projects, just to.
Our order states that the jury is responsible for tearing down hall off, okay, that's what I just want y'all to be aware of. I declare nuisance, I send, you know, once I send it certified letter, it's, it's out of my name, right?
Yeah, clean it up or do it for. Or both.
Either one of them.
Okay.
So have you, you know, notify the white apartment?
Cooper, Cooper Land has, I know, the, the rest of Mr. Oliver just put on, uh, agenda, and there's, uh, three, Jeff, that you went on Richmond, it's three on Richmond, right?
Three.
Yeah, that, that we went and did, Jeff, when I did the, uh, site visit, and we have been processing, I, I plan on sending a letter. And I say, if y'all have any in your districts, please start sending them.
I, I wanna ask one back, Mr. Will, uh, what are your thoughts about us, since the landowner will ultimately be responsible for the costs associated with it, uh, using third party groups instead of tying up our assets and resources that the jury owns and employs here?
That's just gonna be a, a management decision with the police jury, because you get somebody third party, they may charge you fifteen hundred dollars to go remove a house or a structure.
We don't have any.
So we have to pay them, and you have to put a lien, which you may or may not ever get the, the money of the lien back again, because if somebody didn't pay the taxes on the property, and it's not bought by somebody, then the police jury's gonna get it, and it's just gonna be adjudicated property, y'all, and y'all gonna have to sell something. So it's just a management decision with the jury, whether.
With, we would waste, this is written, and Mr. Quiller helped it, would waste written, y'all, the assessor leans that piece of property, and when you pay the property tax, somebody paying property tax on that property, cause they want that property, somebody, whether, whether it's a landowner, or somebody going in there, hoping scoop up the piece of property for next to nothing, uh, they have to pay that, cause, the way I read it, was that the assessor just drops that off to your tax bill, and whoever's paying the property tax, if they want that property, they got, they got paying that part of it too.
You have, you have some, you know, property that people don't own, I mean, they're not paying property tax on it, it goes up for sale and nobody buys it, it's just been here with y'all's hands, y'all have a lot of adjudicated property for the jury, that's right now, really. So, you know, we talked about it one time, civic source, and this is probably not the meeting, it's going to, it's issue, civic source probably can liquidate y'all's adjudicated property, if people don't pay the taxes, cause y'all, y'all just sit on it, we talked about that.
Do you have a list of all the duty take property, or where would they sit at?
Uh, taxes, that should, should have.
I, I'll give it up, yeah, same.
We have, we, I.
We should have, we should have the rest of the duty take property.
So, when we have you, um, civic source, you've been in here, so they said eight years, they were given power of attorney by the police jury, so it may be something, that's something we haven't discussed yet, it's been so much, so it may be something, probably time to revisit our meet with civic sources, see if that's possible.
Let's move on to committee's chapter, for the committee.
So there's no action, it's, it's on this one, this one.
Just commit, I have a, first half committee, not, first half committee, vice committee, Mrs. Cox.
Uh, I'd like to approve monthly invoices, that's a motion.
Discuss, question, is that on page?
Aye.
No, sir.
Here's the problem, Mr. Dick, probably was, he couldn't get it.
I've always thought you come, not, just went out the day, they won't, that road today, when I went out.
I don't get it, I have, I have no complaints. I'm a right out there for.
A lot of houses are sunny, and unless they order material, they done a lot, they have to, they're waiting down anyway, back, and material, I'm a video, uh, I don't see what they're counting.
Well, I said, they, they had, I know they had to order material, now, thank you, tell them a couple of weeks. Was food starting something, Thursday up here?
I just kinda update y'all, on Redwood Creek and Pretty Creek, we have hauled all the debris out of it, it's all there at the, the hang property has been burnt, but we have a lot of debris that you gotta start through, the dirt and all that out of, and still be burning on it, so it'll probably be a couple more weeks on that, but everything is removed. Uh, the vegetation site, the old sawmill site, everything up to the dollar amount has been done on it, and then hauled down and burnt. The April May storm stuff, it's all been burnt, we have to get out everything sorted out, then dispose of the ash on the dark property, we're gonna spread it out, they gotta fly it all into the ground, and we have a lot of topsoil that's gonna be there. And I talked to Frosty about it, what does he wanna do with it, would they all keep it as a parish, but if you do, you will have to haul it from that other site back over there, and he said, yeah, so they can put that on the shoulder of the road, washouts and stuff like that. So pretty much all. So, so pretty much all the debris stuff that we've been dealing with for a while is just about ready to come to an end.
And that area you're talking about has nothing to do with the waste site, right? Okay, this is, this is.
Well, a lot of this, we have two things, we have the ash from the stuff we burnt, we have to go out and spread it out, we can't landfill it, because that's against the law with DEQ, so we're gonna spread it out on the dark property and all there, so we don't have to do a whole lot of hauling on it. And then the dirt, that was coming out of the creek projects and all that stuff here, they, all that gotta be removed.
So that's where that dirt is, it's not coming off of the.
Well, some of it come out of the old sawmills, when we were cleaning it all up, all the dirt and debris was all in one pile.
Can we move that, can we just, I mean, is it, are we?
We're out of money on that, we've done everything we can physically do up there.
I mean, there's lots of rules and everything about moving that dirt, because it's a hazardous waste site.
Now, we didn't, we didn't go, yeah, we didn't go below the four foot level, anything below that, we can't do. All this is on the surface. Yeah, no, that's why we can't do any digging there or anything on that, that's the only thing we can do with store stuff. And, uh, we're finishing up the I-halls, the new paging system for the parish. It'll be one, you don't have to sign up for, we can actually hit it, and it'll work off every cell phone tower in the parish. If you're coming from Baton Rouge, and you didn't get the page originally in that area, soon as you go across and hit that boundary, it'll automatically send you the page, so if a visitor's coming through, and we having to notify them about something major going on, soon as they get out of area, it'll go off, if you're coming home from working Baton Rouge, and you get to that area, your pages will go off. Up until we cancel their learning, and, uh, all this is, uh, being, uh, funded through the federal government. And we come out pretty fortunate with, uh, Hurricane Derby, and that was, uh, hitting Mississippi. Uh, flawed, you see what kind of damage and all they got, when we, we were talking with Chris, when it was coming around, it wasn't supposed to go into the gulf. That's why I tell people, hey, don't trust that, it can go anywhere, and they really don't know where it's gonna wind up at, because it might go there, stall out, and it can turn around and come back there. So just kind of keep an eye on it every morning when you get up, so you have an idea of where it might be going, so they might not stay out in that land. We come out good, not when you've been in trouble right now, that's all.
Mr. Dexter on stand?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain? Mr. Michael Cheetham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Alago?
Yes.
Dr. Christie Oakwin?
Yes.
President Lewis Kent?
I, I just showed the name of the company. We move up the line, but I'm telling you, it's. My, my microphone, I, I think we need investment in the ground, you don't have to buy it, ten thousand. This man right here, but he, he's a electronic, you know about it, I'm just telling you, my grandson shot this one a hundred forty dollar ground. You know, so it, I mean, it's, it's the future, it's here, it's now, thank you.
Yes, I just want to, um, to talk to you about the, uh, road project, we're putting it on battle road, and had an opportunity to, to talk to some of the guys that were out there on the sheet, so, just to tell people this kind of work, and everybody, I'm working in the heat, but this, kind of heat those guys right on the back of that, that, uh, spreader, that thing is hot. Cause I had an opportunity to witness it firsthand, so I just walked out, and you think it's hundred degrees, just have another hundred and twenty two. So when these guys are there working the rest of all the season, just be patient with them, give them some time, respect them while they try and get out, because it is hot, and they are going to, uh, like, I think this is y'all's, so that's all.
Thanks for the mind.
Yeah.